Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, October 23, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like next to begin our meeting as we do. Part of our tradition is to read the mission statement. It is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number four on the agenda is a public comment. Any member of the public is welcome to come up to the table this evening and bring up a topic that may or may not be on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we shall move along. One thing I'd like to do before we begin the official agenda for this evening, I know that the Wakefield community is very sad this week, and I'd like to call for a moment of silence, both among the committee and among the community in general, as we recognize the passing of a seventh-grade student at Galvin Middle School, and wish dear Rebecca Sampson and her family nothing but the best, that our hearts and thoughts are with them this evening and always. A moment of silence, please. I thank you all, and certainly keep the Sampsons in our thoughts and prayers. As we continue with the agenda, then we have members of the Student Advisory Council here this evening. We do, please, come up and welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
So, fall sports are ending at the high school, and winter sports will begin soon. College visits are continuing for seniors, so they can check out of their class and go down cafeteria and learn more about a college. Career talks. We had a computer programmer recently, and there'll be an FBI agent to have a career talk during lunch. And the Italian exchange is currently here. We have, I think, about 20 Italian students who are currently with us. They were here last week, and they'll be here for the remainder of this week. And then in the spring, our students will go to Italy.
That sounds great. Are there any questions for our representative? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. We'll look forward to hearing more about the Italian student visit next time. Consent agenda, we have a motion. Mr. Cowan in.
I am of the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meetings of September 26, 2018, and October 9 of 2018, and accept the minutes of the school committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting of October 9, 2018, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. There will be no comments or action items under the chairman's reports this evening? Move right into superintendent actions. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Tom. I'd like to update the committee and the public on the recent visit last Tuesday, October 16, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Had a team of six people, and two members of an engineering group joined them as well. And we met in the high school conference room with, we had our entire legislative team here. We had Rep. Roder, Rep. Wong, and Senator Lewis present. Steve Mayo is here, and a big help. Special thanks to Amy MacLeod and Maria Sareo, who organized a lot of the material for the meeting. But the MSBA was here to do a senior site study of the high school, which is the next step after us submitting last spring our statement of interest to receive support to rebuild or renovate the high school. So, this is kind of step two of four steps in a process. And so, it was a two-hour meeting. There was about, we started off with about 22 people that were present, and what we did first is we answered questions that the engineering consultants had about the statement of interest in the state of the high school. They were particularly concerned with our science labs and how the state of the high school is kind of affecting educational programming. And, you know, after students, after being at the Galvin, and students come here, kind of how that, kind of how instruction changes with the confined spaces. And so, the engineering consultants asked, went through the entire SOI, the Statement of Interest, the ESOI, and also asked questions for us about our NEOSC accreditation, which we should be finding out about by the end of the week as well. So, the high school has been on warning because of the physical plant for the last seven years, and the concern is that because the physical plant is deteriorating at a rate that it is, that it could affect our NEOSC accreditation. And we could move from warning to a probationary status. And, you know, NEOSC was really emphatic and made it a point, and I'm sure they'll do this in their reporting as well, that this is not due to, because of the efforts of the teachers. The teaching and learning that's happening here is the best that it possibly can be under the circumstances, you know, of the classrooms and especially our science labs. So, that's what they stressed. But after reviewing the statement of interest, the whole team did a tour of the high school from top to bottom. We looked at, we looked at everything. We looked at all rooms, all wings, all academic wings. We were in the art wing, fine and performing arts. And, you know, they, it was interesting, because as we toured around the building, you know, there were sandbags by the door in the gym to stop water from coming in. And I think that they really got a sense of how much we're working to make the facility work. But I think that there still is a question of, over time, how long can we do this? So, we're looking forward to their report, which should come, we're thinking, around December or January. And we look forward to reporting back to the committee about where we're at with that. The next phase, if we are moved forward, and so this is an important piece, is everyone is competing for state dollars that wants to rebuild or renovate their high school. So, if we are a school that is selected to move forward in the process, we will move to what they call the eligibility phase, and then we will be asked to complete a feasibility study with an architectural and an engineering firm. And so, that's where we're at right now. I don't know if you have anything, Chris, that you'd like to add?
Just that if we do get to that stage, the feasibility study becomes a warrant on town meeting, a town meeting to, because the town has to fund its portion of that feasibility study. But there's no point in putting it on the warrant until we get to that point. That would be amazing.
Yeah. And so, we also know, hearing from parents, as Cara Morrow and I have been doing coffees around the district, and we're meeting with parents, especially elementary parents, you know, the first question that they often ask is, what's the plan for the high school? You know, when will we know? What are we doing? And so, I guess the news and the answer to that question is, we'll know more in December or January, if we're moved forward in the eligibility phase, or if we're asked to resubmit our statement of interest. And that will kind of means that we'll start over again. But that's where we're at, and I'll keep you right up to date as soon as I get more information. So, that's it in regard to our MSBA visit. I would like to introduce Cara Morrow and Matt Carter. Cara is our Assistant Superintendent, and Matt is the Director of Wakefield Academy, if you want to come up. And so, they've been working diligently, going through our District MCAS data, and they're going to report tonight on kind of where we stand in that area.
Good evening.
I think I speak for both Matt and myself when I say we're very grateful for the opportunity to work through this information with you tonight. It's been a really helpful practice for us to prepare for tonight, just as we've entered our new roles within the district. It's opened up the door to a lot of great conversations with administration and teachers and other staff throughout the district. So, we're thankful for that. The way we've structured tonight's presentation is, we'll start with an overview of the assessment system, and also provide some historical perspective as well. And then we'll move into a breakdown of our scores for grades three through eight, which are the groups who participate in the Next Generation MCAS. And then also provide a breakdown for science, technology, and engineering for grades five, eight, and nine, as well as the high school ELA in math in grade 10, which also participate in the Legacy MCAS. Additionally, we'll try to, we'll spend some time looking at a comparison to other districts, other DART districts. I know that's been requested in the past, so we'll spend some time looking at that as well. And then, at the end, what we'll do is just highlight some focus areas for our district moving forward. Not necessarily recommendations, I don't think, you know, we're in a position right now to be making recommendations, but we'll just highlight some trends in terms of conversations that we've had, and conversations we want to continue moving forward. So, I'll move over to Matt for the next slide.
So, again, I just want to reiterate, thank you for this opportunity, and I really appreciate just the invitation to speak before you tonight. So, just some highlights, I guess, a little bit of an overview here before we kind of get into the school-based information and district-based stuff. This is kind of our first year, working through this new accountability structure. We've been asked through DESI to avoid the comparative between 2017, 2018. They did provide student growth percentiles, which in and of itself is a comparative tool. And I'll speak more to that as we go on, but just for reference, we have been asked to avoid looking too deep into comparing the previous year to this year. Under this new accountability system, 74% of schools were designated as not requiring assistance or intervention. I think that's noteworthy. Wakefield Public Schools, every school falls within that, within that structure. And under the new accountability system, 90% of districts were designated as not requiring assistance or intervention. Again, Wakefield Public Schools in that category as well. And then, kind of a interesting sort of addition, DESI has designated 52 schools as schools of recognition. We'll dive a little deeper into one of our schools that was able to achieve this distinction.
So, moving on to the next slide, we felt that this was just an important visual for the committee to see, and the parents at home as well. As Matt just mentioned, in terms of the DESI accountability classification, all of our schools fall into the classification of not requiring assistance or intervention. And what this means is that we've, all of our schools have either partially met or met the targets that were put out through DESI. And, you know, it allows us some flexibility in terms of where we want to go as a district moving forward. Not to say that we won't be carefully looking at areas of limited growth or decline, but those are decisions that we're able to make at the district level that are aligned with our instructional strategy. So, this is a positive place for us to be at, at this point.
So, I wanted to give a visual of sort of this new accountability and the information that we see, and this is a school perspective. So, this is one of our elementary schools in the district. You'll notice the overall classification is not requiring assistance or intervention. However, if you look at the reason for that classification, this is one school that was partially meeting targets. And the reason for this partially meeting, if you go through the overall results, you can see it's broken out by different categories, achievement, growth, high school completion. In this case, this is not a high school, this is one of our elementary schools, so you'll notice no data for that. Progress towards attaining EL proficiency and additional indicators such as attendance. So, what you'll notice is, this school in particular, if you look over to the far right under the category of lowest-performing students, that in and of itself is a subgroup, and you'll notice that it's marked on a four-point scale. You'll notice that in terms of English Language Arts, we received a four out of four, which means we were able to move our lowest-performing students in English. But you'll notice in math, we received a zero out of four, which means that we did not meet the target that was set out for us. So, that's the reason why we received that zero score. This information, I just share it with you, because this is important in terms of how schools get classified. We're very, very interested in that lowest 25 and moving those students along. And those students don't necessarily fall into certain subgroups or categories. It's not necessarily a student who is designated as special ed, a student who's EL, it's just a student who did not perform as well as we, as a school, hoped they would perform. The other piece I really want to point out here is, you'll notice in the top right, there is an accountability percentile. Even though this school was designated as only partially meeting targets, it's in the 76th percentile for schools in the state, which means it's in the top 25%. So, yes, there are areas within this, within this piece for us to look at and definitely dive a little deeper into, but we're still talking about a school that's in the top 25% of schools in the state. So, I just wanted to highlight this for you. And then another important piece, especially as we move on, in the high school, there is some additional factors, such as graduation rate, dropout rate, dual credit programs. So, those are things that we definitely have to be looking at at the high school level. I did not share a high school example here, but you can find it on the DESI website under Wakefield Memorial High. And then in terms of, you know, other factors such as absenteeism, right? How many days are our students missing? Because these kind of, they factor in to what we're trying to do. On the far right side, you'll notice 67.5% of kind of this overall structure is dedicated to achievement, 22.5 dedicated to growth, and then 10% of that score is weighted towards absenteeism. So, that's sort of the makeup, the weighting, in terms of how we are ranked or classified, so you can get a visual for what that looks like.
On the next slide, we thought it was important to just highlight the different labels in terms of achievement levels for both the Next Generation MCAS and the Legacy. As you can see in parentheses at the top, as we mentioned, the Next Generation MCAS is for grades three through eight, and the Legacy MCAS was for science, technology, and engineering for grades five, eight, and nine, and ELA in math in grade 10. You know, they're pretty, they're pretty close in terms of the description and what they mean. I'll run through the Next Generation achievement level labels, exceeding expectations, just that, the students who fell in that category exceeded grade-level expectations related to learning standards at their grade level. Students who fell in meeting expectations, those students met their expectations at their grade level. They're in good, strong academic standing and able to demonstrate skills and competencies needed for that grade level. The students in partially meeting expectations, they've met some of their grade-level standard expectations, but they did fall short in some areas. And these are the students who, you know, DESI is encouraging, you know, teams and parents to work together to look at interventions for students falling within this range, to see how we can get those students to meeting expectations. For students falling in the not-meeting-expectation range, these are the students we really want to look closely at, and their intervention system might be more in-depth. These might be students falling within special education who have a more specific individualized education program and specialized instruction. Again, these are the students we really want to be looking at carefully to make sure that we have plans in place for them to move to the next level. And as Matt had mentioned, when we're talking and we're asking schools to look at their lowest 25%, you know, many of those students are likely falling in the not-meeting or the partially-meeting-expectations range.
So, this here is an example, parents three through eight would have received something like this in the mail. This just shows where your child is achieving in relation to ELA math, and is available kind of for you to look at. It gives a range, so the scaled scores are ranged from 440 at the low end to 560 at the high end. In this example, you can see the student, in this case, Jonathan Doe, received a score of 541, right, in the exceeding category. But what's important here for parents to know is, that bottom-left corner, you can see sort of, you know, how your child did relative to their school at the elementary level, relative to the district, and then, of course, at the state level, which is just a comparative tool for you to look at and get an idea of where your child is falling. Again, data, in this case, it's useful, it's a tool for us to use at the school level, but it's not necessarily destiny either, right? We're really trying to create a baseline with this new system and figure out where our students are landing, so we can support them best.
So, on the next slide, we thought it was important for us to tease out some highlights. I think, you know, not everybody gets a chance to look at the data the way that we did and to dig as deep into it, so we thought it would be, you know, helpful for families to just pull out some highlights from each of the schools. We're presenting most of the information at the district level, so we thought it might be nice to just provide a breakdown for a highlight from each of the schools. I'll start with the first few. So, at the Dolberg School, it was definitely a highlight to report that 95% of the students who took the MCAS, the Next Generation MCAS, met DESI-defined targets. And what that means is that, you know, based on prior test results, DESI identifies target scores for achievement and growth for each school, and 95% of the students at the Dolberg School hit that target. That was a real positive there. As we move on to Galvin, we looked in particular at the eighth-grade math scores. They showed a significant jump from the year prior, with 61% of our students falling in the proficient or exceeding expectations range. This was a notable improvement at that level. And at the Greenwood School, we took a particular look at the English Language Arts in that school, where no student scored in the not-meeting-expectations range. So, there were about probably 90 students who took that assessment, and not a single student had a scaled score less than 470, which we thought was quite notable for that school.
So, at the, at the high school, ELA achievement was top-notch. They exceeded their target, which was, again, DESI-defined. At the Walton, the Walton School was our school that was identified as a school of recognition, exceeding targets, exceptional growth, exceptional achievement. So, those are kind of the noteworthy factors that go into that recognition. And then at the Woodville School, 89% of students were able to meet those DESI-defined targets. And just to sort of follow up on that, when you look at Dolberg School, at 95% of the students meeting targets, you look at Woodville, 89%, you think to yourself, that's awesome, right? That's great. Why are they not necessarily a school of recognition? It's important to note that targets are given school by school, based on the previous year. So, the targets for one school could be different than the targets for another school. And I think that that's noteworthy, and just gives a little bit of an explanation in terms of what's going on with that information.
So, the next couple of slides, what we'll do is, we'll provide a breakdown of our MCAS scores, but also provide comparison, as I had referenced earlier, to DART districts. And what DART means, the acronym District Analysis and Review Tools, DESI puts together a list of towns that are comparable to Wakefield, and, you know, that might be in relation to population, subgroups, size, that sort of thing. So, we'll provide that overview, so you can see where we're falling with regard to those DART districts.
So, this is a graph taken directly from our DESI profile for Wakefield. You can see on here that it is grades three to eight listed in ELA and math. And then at the bottom, it's actually a combination, grades three to eight, English, math, everyone included. So, you can see sort of where we fall relative to the state. And what should be highlighted here is that the majority of our ELA and math accomplishments grade by grade, we are above the state. We, as a district, are looking at some of these grades that are not meeting that threshold and considering, you know, what we can be doing to move that conversation along. When you look, excuse me, when you look at the second column in from the right, the average SGP, that is a growth percentile that's given to students. Every student, when they write MCAS, falls into a cohort, and then they are compared to students within their cohort. So, you will notice that in grade three, there is not an SGP available. That's because they haven't written it before, there's no sort of baseline for them to be compared to. But starting in grade four, they do get compared. And it's important to have an average SGP that falls somewhere in that 40 to 60 range. That is representative of what we call a year's worth of growth. So, looking at this, the majority of our scores do fall into that range. We would like to see 50 and above. That's kind of the target, but 40 to 60 is sort of the give or take in terms of what is an acceptable sort of measure. And I can answer questions on this later, but just overview purposes, it is there for you to see.
So, moving on to this graph, what this represents is how Wakefield scored in ELA compared to DART districts. And you can see that the DART districts are listed at the bottom. What this shows is, the average score in ELA for our Wakefield students was a 501.1, so that fell within the meeting expectations range. And what this line chart does is just give an overview of where Wakefield fell to other DART districts and their average ELA score. So, you can see we're, you know, above some districts, below others, and it would just be important information to continue to reveal.
So, same sort of thing, this is our math, average scaled score. Again, scaled score ranges from 440 up to 560. You can see, again, we're about 501 and a half. It's important to note here that the difference between us scoring at 501 and a half compared to a district that scores 508 on the high end, may be three points, okay? So, it looks like, you know, there is a difference there, and there is, but it's also important to note, this is our first year, and also that the difference between a school or a district scoring on the high end and a district scoring on the low end is probably plus or minus three. So, we're somewhere in the middle, plus or minus three, high and low.
How many questions is that?
It could be, it could be, it could be two questions. Some questions are worth a point, some are worth two, some are worth more. So, it's not, at this point, it's just something to note, that this is where we're at in terms of a scaled score comparison, and give us some information that we could use moving forward.
So, the next slide moves into the science, the science, technology, and engineering assessment taken in grade five. And as I referenced, this was the Legacy MCAS assessment. So, we are able to offer the comparison over a couple of years, which this graph shows. You know, as you can see, our scores have been pretty consistent over the years. We're about, you know, at about half of students falling within the proficient and advanced range. You know, it is notable, we want to continue to look at this information and see, you know, where we can move with these scores. I know in past presentations, science has been identified as an area of growth for the district, just in terms of how we're moving those scores forward.
So, this is grade eight, science and tech. You'll notice that there was a reduction in our percentage of students scoring in the warning category, but again, noteworthy, only 42% of our students are scoring advanced or proficient on this assessment. So, again, this is something that, as a district, we need to continue looking at and having So, I just wanted to share sort of a conversation piece. This comes from a conversation that I had with the principal of the Dolberg School. Thank you, TJ, for letting me use this. So, in conversations with principals around MCAS, we have actually been doing a deep dive into item-by-item analysis. This here is an example of what we've taught, what we talked about. So, what you see here is, this is our ELA, grade three, standards broken out. You can see them on the left-hand side. And you can see that threshold there is how we did relative to the state. So, in some cases, we are, you know, almost 15 points ahead of where the state is. So in some cases, we are, you know, almost fifteen points ahead of where the state is in certain standards. Um, but you can see in some, we are lagging behind. So, um, in conversations with principals, we have been looking at this information uh, and, um, creating actionable steps to address some of these standards where we're, where we're losing ground. Um, and the goal here obviously is to, uh, have all of the lines on the right-hand side.
So we'll move on to, uh, the next set of slides. And, and what we'll do in these, uh, next few slides, Matt is going to review the MCAS scores for the, for the high school and how those have been compared year to year.
So again, this was, uh, taken directly from the, uh, DESI profile for Wakefield Memorial High School. Uh, you'll notice, uh, ELA, we, we talked about English Language Arts as a, uh, strength of the school. You'll notice, uh, ninety-four per- percent of our students are proficient or higher, uh, in terms of, uh, that assessment. In math, uh, we do fall a little bit. Um, eighty-six percent of our students are proficient or higher. You will notice though, that is still eight points above, um, where we, where the state, um, is at. Again, um, I think we spoke, Kara and I both, a little bit about science in terms of, um, five and eight. It is noteworthy that only seventy-six percent of our students are scoring proficient or higher, um, on that STE, STE test, um, at the high school level. Um, again, um, just a conversation we want, uh, to continue having. So what I've done here, um, is, or what we've done here, is we have broken out, um, just a comparative year over year. Um, we are able to compare this information because this is Legacy MCAS. Um, so high school, um, is, is under a different, uh, umbrella, uh, as well as the five and eight science. And, uh, what you can see here, um, is our results, um, in grade ten ELA. So you'll notice fifty-four percent of our students advanced this, this past year, thirty-nine percent proficient, um, six percent in the needs improvement category, and only one, um, in the failing, uh, area, which, um, is exceptional. This is our math, um, and based on what, um, I had shared two slides ago, um, you can see how the numbers creep up a little bit. Um, fifty-six percent in the advanced category, twenty-eight in the proficient, twelve in the needs improvement, um, and then three percent of our students falling in that failing category. So again, conversation piece. And then this is our science. You can see that, um, over the last four years, I would say that, um, our overall achievement has been, uh, rather flat in terms of what, um, in terms of what we're trying to do here. Uh, twenty-seven percent in the advanced, forty-eight proficient, twenty-three in the needs improvement, and two, uh, percent in that failing category. So again, conversation piece around science.
Great. So as we move into the next slide, uh, this is an area where we're going to highlight some focus areas, uh, for moving forward. You know, as I had mentioned earlier, um, Matt and I are both relatively new within our positions. Um, you know, with this being also, you know, with regard to the Next Generation MCAS, it's not a year to be using those results to make major changes within the district. But I think, you know, as part of our process and for, for preparing for tonight and just in preparing for our roles within the district, we've, we've met with a lot of different groups at every level, um, including, you know, administration, teachers, curriculum coordinators, literacy coaches. Um, we've asked a lot of questions and, and that's been really helpful for us, just to figure out where we are as a district, where, you know, there's agreement in terms of where we should move. So I thought, you know, as we, as we were preparing for tonight, we thought it might be helpful just to identify trends that we're seeing within those conversations and to really structure what our, our focused conversations will be moving forward with all of those different groups. And I think it starts at central office with the vision, you know, that Doug is sharing, uh, what we're all talking about at central office, and then bringing that down to the building level, um, with principals as, as the instructional leaders of their buildings. Um, what, how are they, uh, working with their teachers, what are they talking about at the building level? So, um, these are some of the trends, and they're kind of in, they're in an order of sorts. One of the first things we talk about, um, we've been talking about is just that, this idea of a data inventory. So, you know, that's continuously asking questions about the data we're collecting within the district to progress monitor our students. Um, we're, we're trying to, to, to push the envelope a little bit, you know, ask the questions. Um, teachers are coming to us, you know, talking about the need for this, to be monitoring, what are we using? How are we using it, and is it giving us the information that we need to change up our instructional strategies, to meet the students in front of us? Um, is it matching our MCAS results? Um, because that really doesn't help us if the information we're collecting in district is not reflective on our MCAS scores. So those, that's a continued point of conversation that we think needs to continue. And, you know, that there could be consistency created and agreements made at every level as to what those tools might be. So, uh, you know, following, kind of just coming right behind that is just looking at the structure of our data and assessment meetings at every level. These are happening, uh, in this, the structures of them, you know, may vary school to school. We think we have a lot of, um, exemplars within the district. You know, one of the things that we've noticed through these conversations is, um, we really, you know, are very impressed with the structures that Wakefield has in place, um, in terms of the, the staffing, the coaches, the curriculum coordinators, um, the general and special ed resources, as well as the planning, the common planning time and professional learning communities. There's a lot of great resources within the district. So we just want to keep the conversations focused in terms of, um, making sure that we're maximizing all of these resources. So when we talk about the data and assessment meetings, that's really the forum to talk about our student progress data. And, you know, what do those conversations look like? Are we talking about changing instructional strategies? Are we talking about interventions? Are we tracking that, um, to make sure that we're moving all of our students? Not just our lowest population of learners, but also those students falling in the middle, um, in high achieving categories. Co- continuing along the same line is, um, continuing our conversations around aligned instructional practices. We think this is a huge, uh, focus area moving forward. Um, it's something that, you know, the conversation's already, already started, which we're excited about. Um, it's really, um, being driven by our curriculum coordinators, our coaches, our administration. Just how are we all looking at instructional practices? And are we looking at them with the same lens? And are we feeling that confidence in terms of what is being covered in terms of, of learning standards at each level? Uh, this is important as our students particularly transition level to level, that our teachers really know how our students are coming in, what they know, so that we can, we can build upon that as opposed to starting over year to year. So it's just really about communication and sharing that common lens and sharing those common practices. You know, I just ma- I'm, I just mentioned the transition piece. Um, that's another area of focus, uh, that I think we'll continue conversations around, is looking at our transition data. Um, as students transition from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, are we, um, providing the structures, uh, to, to have those conversations about who our students are, what they need, how they're coming in? Um, that's really useful information. We'll want to continue to, to talk about that and monitor any dips we might see as students transition level to level. And the last piece, um, is just, again, you know, as we, I, I mentioned the great structures that are in place. We have a lot of expertise within the district. We have a lot of people we can tap into. It's really, we're, we're kind of looking at it as our responsibility to help facilitate those conversations and, and work with our building leaders, uh, and how, you know, they're maximizing their resources, how they're working with their instructional leadership teams, their school councils, their data teams to analyze our student data and, um, drive change in terms of instructional practices moving forward. So it's, these, we're looking at, you know, not necessarily recommendations, just trends of things people are talking about and directions that, that our, our people want to move in. So we're, we're here to support those conversations. So that, you know, that summarizes our, our presentation. We really want to thank everyone. This was a, a joint effort. We, we tried to seek out a lot of feedback in gathering this information, so it was representative of, of what, um, e- everyone's thoughts within the district. And we're happy to answer any questions and also to put out to families at home. We're always available by email as well, if there are additional questions.
Great job. And so I, you know, I think you guys are really remarkably modest in regard to the presentation. I think this, this short presentation doesn't kind of fully reflect probably the, the last three weeks of work that you've been doing and preparing. So really super proud of you both for, for kind of digging this deep, you know, I think. So thank you for that, you know? I'd also like to just make a couple points that I think people at home may want to just think about. Um, the individual student reports are particularly valuable, and they have a lot of information. And, you know, when you look at a number as a score, it doesn't tell the whole story. But if you look down, you can actually look down to the s- different strands to see, you know, um, if measurement is a weakness for you, or if geometry is a weakness for you in math. So, you know, the, the individual scoring report for parents is really a terrific place to start if they have individual questions about their children. Um, and, and I think that we would urge them, um, as the Commissioner of Education has done, is we would urge them to just contact their schools and ask questions, right? So that's just in regard to the individual student piece, you know? And so, and in regard to our lens in which we're looking at data, we're looking at individual students by class, by teacher. We're looking at data by school, and we're also looking at data by the entire district, okay? And so one of the things that Commissioner Riley has really asked of us, not district leaders and school leaders, is to really use this information. So these are new, new, new tests, right? New tests with new thresholds, right? So if I could make an analogy, um, this would be like you're, you have a new math teacher. They might, and they're giving a more difficult test. The test might include some, some different items that have never been asked before. And so the, the new averages are, are differently placed, and they're often lower. And so these are also kind of, at times, are what seems like arbitrarily constructed. So when you get this data to make sense of it, they create thresholds wherever they, they, being the Department of Education, feels like makes the most sense. So if you look at the arc of how students are achieving, you know, there's an equal distribution between, you know, meeting or exceeding and not meeting, and also in the middle. So it, it creates a perfect bell curve. So, and that's just really about making the data work for your accountability system. So I, I want to stress this because it's not only been stressed to us by the Commissioner, but it's really, really critically important because these scores are n- are really a prompt, right? To really ask questions and start a conversation about, you know, where we are. Remember, there's three reasons why we give this test. One, to check our curriculum and our standards. Two, to kind of look at the accountability system in regard to, are we working kind of faithfully toward the standards and teaching toward the standards? And the third is for this, these assessments are competency determination for, that we use for the high school, right? And, you know, and Commissioner Riley will, will tell us, and he reminds us often. You know, and Massachusetts is also, you know, the best kind of group of testers in the country, right? And that's important, but it's a relative thing. You know, really what we want to grow is kind of the best cohort of thinkers, the best cohort of leaders also in the state. And so that's, that's just an important piece that I feel like I want to add. But I'm sure everyone asked questions for you. Chris?
Some of the information you had, I, I, you, you mentioned like that, um, I forget what the acronym was. Was it SGA or something like that? Yeah, so, um, that, you know, to have, to have one school at ninety-five and another one at eighty-nine doesn't mean anything because they had different goals. So somewhere in all this data, you must have information as to how one elementary school did on math compared to a different elementary school in order to develop best practices and try to understand why one did better. Was it just a particularly talented cohort of kids? Or was it that, you know, there's some teaching happening differently at one school than another? Is, is that what you, you have that information?
So we haven't had it broken out like that by the department. Um, but knowing kind of the glow, anytime you create a scale, you know, everyone wants to put measure a first and a less than first, right? Or a bottom, you know? Um, so, so to, so the ans- the short answer to your question is yes. So do we use these assessments to identify best practices? Um, and are there variables that go into those determinations? You know, could it be, you know, really high level of instruction? Yes. Um, could it be a really, um, particularly talented group of students? Yes. And so there are variables that r- really need to be looked into beyond just a score or an accountability level. So, um, but we are learning from one another and from different schools and different districts now at a higher level than we ever have. And I think we're sharing our practice both as teachers and leaders more now than we ever have. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I, I guess I'm interested in, I mean, not only are we getting that information across our own district,
Yeah.
but from other districts. I noticed, uh, on one of those graphs that like, was it Mansfield was particularly high compared to all the other towns? Um, you know, are you able to go in and see, you know, what practices they're doing in that we could learn from?
So it, it, you're making, if I'm, know the slides like I do, and I, and I don't want to take, you know, but that vertical scale, Chris?
It's a three-point sc- I realized, three-point.
Yeah, it was like a, that vertical scale, you know, it looked like a jagged line, like a mountain range. Um, but the, really, that, that, that vertical scale was only about ten points, and they're all schools that-
I think Matthew said it was three.
High to lowest was six.
Yeah, but, you know, um, but I guess the point, so it's, that's, that's very small scale. And those, all of those districts, on average, are, are meeting, uh, meeting expectations.
Right.
So, um, so do we get to see what Mansfield is doing compared to what we're doing? Not specifically.
Right.
Um, but, actually, I shouldn't, I, let me qualify that. We can look at their, their accountability data through district profiles and see what subcategories, how their subcategories perform compared to our own. So we can find that out, but we, we won't know instructional practices.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, there's, there's a lot to-
Yeah.
-gather.
I, I was just going to say, I think a, a positive in a lot of our conversations has been just how aligned, um, you know, I look at the four elementary schools and, you know, the middle school principal, the high school principal, just what a strong group they are in terms of communicating, uh, what they're doing with regard to best practices. So I, I think you can't help, but when you, when you look at this data, you can't help but ask questions of one another, um, depending on, you know, when, especially when you dig deep in terms of where did, did students fall short? Where did they thrive? Um, so I think those conversations are going to continue to happen. I think we have the forums for them, uh, where principals are getting together regularly and talking about that. What I'm pleased to hear is there's, seems to be a real, uh, goal in, in principals striving for that consistency, so that they're, they're continuously talking about what each other are doing, so that, you know, depending where you're, you're living in town, you're having a similar experience regardless of which elementary. I think that's the, the, the key piece, um, which I've been excited to hear. As I've had conversations with principals, that they're all shooting for that goal.
That, that's been a longstanding-
Yeah.
-goal of others committees, to make sure that, you know, the equity part.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't know who, okay.
You're going?
Um, thank you, Tom. Um, so Kara and Matt, I just had a, um, not to focus, you know, solely on this, but, um, for me, the, um, the grade five and the grade eight Science and Technology scores, um, it's sort of glaring, um, where our students are falling into the proficient and needs improvement category almost equally. And wondering if, um, we have just gone through a review of our science, um, frameworks and curriculum, and sort of looking at elementary and going forward, um, you know, them taking the test in fifth and eighth grade, are we choosing, you know, an appropriate curriculum for, um, you know, mastering their standards? Um, and was it considered maybe that the programs we were using in the past were not able to, you know, implement the mastery of the standards, or, or even proficiency, you know? Um, looking at the kids that are falling in these improvement, because then in grade ten, you know, where we might be, we're moving closer to that number that we want, you know? It, it's pretty significant, the change between five and eight and then in tenth grade. And it's interesting because we were just talking about the, the visit from our, um, Building Authority School, and we don't have the labs and whatnot, yet our kids are, and, you know, they're performing well on their grade ten Science and Technology, but where we do have those modern facilities. So just wondering if you might have, you know, just something, um, it's not simple, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean-
Something that you've noticed.
Yeah, I mean, I think I can speak a bit to it. I mean, just some thoughts, just in terms of the conversations, like I said, and I'm not, you know, going, I'm not prepared to make any strong recommendations, but I think, you know, some thoughts and conversations we're having are, are just analyzing the standards that are being taught, you know, within, at, at the elementary level, at the middle school level. You know, are we, are we structuring our time on learning in a- You know, are we, are we structuring our time on learning in a way that, um, standards are being prioritized and enough time is being spent on each, um, to prepare the students? Um, I think that's a conversation, you know, I don't know the answer to that, but I know it's a conversation, you know, what I've had with, um, different groups, that, that, that's something that we're going to want to look at, just in terms of how we're structuring the time spent on learning within science. Um, I think we adopted a new curriculum, new curriculum tools at the elementary level. Again, that, um, that's just how we're delivering the instruction. Those are resources that we're using. I think it sounds like a, a positive program, it sounds very hands-on. Um, but I also think timing is always a factor too. And there's always a crunch, um, you know, particularly at the elementary level for teachers who are teaching all subject areas to prioritize their schedule. Um, so we're always going to be wanting to look at how we can support, um, the schedule as well, just to, to make sure that there's enough time. And I think, you know, as we look at the jump from fourth to fifth grade, um, you know, we talked about those transition activities, those transition, um, practices. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit, bit about gathering that data, particularly in science, so that we know right off of, um, right out of the gate, what our fourth graders coming into fifth grade know with regard to science, um, standards. And, you know, collecting that information, um, through a, a pre-test type process, where, where we're very clear, and our teachers are very clear, how our students are coming into them. Um, so they know exactly where to pick up. They know what needs to be re-taught, they know what has already been mastered. So, you know, again, more conversations, um, but I think we have, we have the people in place who are, who are ready to, to take those conversations to the next level.
Great, thank you.
And we need to look at sort of, just to build what we are doing in fourth and seventh grade, uh, in terms of getting our students prepared. And maybe even what we're doing beginning of fifth grade, and what we're doing beginning of eighth grade, so that we're ready, um, our, so our students are ready, um, when these types of assessments come around, um, in the spring. So, those are conversations we're having, and that will have a marketable impact on these, on these outcomes.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Everyone seems like they're doing a great job.
Um, just a quick question for you. Um, I was looking at the, you said the DART districts, um, eleven towns, looks like. Um, just two questions off of that. Um, does the state designate that group? And the second question would be, is that just based on similar performance numbers? Or is it something else?
Yeah, you can take the first.
Um, so, if you go to the DESI, uh, website and you look at Wakefield, um, there will be a tab at the top, right along the top portion, it'll say DART trends, I believe. Um, if you click on that, it actually defines for you, um, the districts, uh, in, that we are comparative to. Um, and when you ask what we're comparative in regard to, special ed population, EL population, um, student population, like overall, um, that's some of the information that they take in to compare us.
If I could just add to that, that it, what they compare us to is more about the demographics of the district than about the, than about the scores. Scores really are not a driver or a factor of that, it's the demographics of the district and the makeup of the community. Amy?
Thank you, that was a great presentation. Um, I just had a quick question, um, you know, other than the MCAS, is there any other, um, data that you are collecting so that we can analyze, um, student progress throughout the year? And also, you know, in terms of communicating, um, you know, within different schools and with different teachers, you know, how are we going to implement that kind of a plan? Is there anything that you guys have discussed or are working on at this point?
So, I can take the first, I'll take the first in terms of what are we, um, so what, what we've learned in terms of internal, uh, data collection right now, it varies from level to level. Um, I, in kind of a broad overview at the elementary level, one of the, uh, the primary sources that we're using is the Fanta, Fanta-Sipinal Benchmark Assessment System, um, to measure, as a, as a primary tool for literacy. That alongs with, along with Ames Web, um, is looking at ELA in math, um, continuously doing running records to monitor students' reading. Um, and in math, we're relying more so on unit tests and, um, progress checks, check-ins. That's an area where we want to come to, to more agreement around other tools that we can use consistently to track student data. Um, at the, the middle school and the high school, um, I know that they've adopted some new tools as well to try to progress monitor students. One of the major focus areas across the district has been on student discourse. Uh, that has been a, a, a practice that a lot of our instructional leaders are looking at as they go into classrooms from level to level. And what I mean by that is they're tracking, um, the level of student engagement within classrooms. Um, I think it's a huge marker for whether or not our students are understanding the content, if they're able to engage in conversations with their peers about content, if they're able to generalize what they've learned into a conversation. So, that's really, um, where we're spending a lot of time looking at what that looks like in classrooms at every level. And that can be down, you know, in kindergarten, students can be engaging all the way up to high school. That's in a much more sophisticated way. But I've, um, I'm hearing that that's a common thing that's being looked at across the level, which I think is, is very positive.
Is there a timing to that, like, is it maybe quarterly? You know, you received information September through November, and then kind of, you know, receive the data, get the data, analyze it, and then maybe discuss?
So, a lot of the, the, the structure for a lot of the data and assessment meetings that are going on are usually in about six-week intervals where, um, there's, you know, usually, you know, a fall data collection, winter, spring. And then, within intervals, um, teams are getting together and they're analyzing what that looks like. They're creating intervention plans, coming back together, and, um, looking to see if students have improved or where they need to go next. Um, you know...
Is that like implemented through like professional development days? Or is that something different?
Typically, what's happening is, um, each, it, it's happening in a different way at each school. And so, I think that's something when we talk about focus areas moving forward, uh, we want to look at length of time and structure for those meetings at every level, and how they're being, you know, you know, I think every school is doing them in, in their own way. But, um, some schools might have better outcomes in terms of how they're able to get their teachers together, what the level of conversation looks like, how they're tracking that data. And our goal is really looking at consistency, um, in terms of that structure. Because when structured in a way that allows for a lot of conversation to happen, that's when you're really getting into talking about how students are learning. What are the interventions that have been placed? Do we need to move forward with a, um, a referral to special education? Those are where, you know, all of those conversations are happening. And so, an appropriate amount of time needs to be given in order to have those meaningful conversations.
Right.
Um, you know, and I don't know if it's a good time for Matt, you know, Matt, to talk about, you know, your goals with really, you know, to, to collecting data throughout the district in terms of timing. I don't know if you want to jump in on that piece?
Yeah, so, I think it's noteworthy too that we've actually been attending data meetings at schools. Um, so Kara and I have actually gone to schools and seen sort of what the conversation looks like.
Yep.
Um, and debriefed with, you know, administration after about sort of where the next steps are. Um, this information is like a tool, you know, it, it, it can help drive. Um, but for me, it's like an important tool because it's public, you know? And people see it, and people ask questions about it. Um, I would love nothing more than for our conversations to be about our pre and post-assessments that we're offering school to school, and we could show growth that way. But this is, um, how the information is made available to the public. So, as a district, we have to be, um, mindful of that. Um, this stuff is important. Um, when we look at our elementary schools, I would love nothing more than for our entry, our elementary schools to be ranked one, two, three, and four, you know, in the state, and they rotate, you know, every year, and a new one is number one. Um, but the truth of the matter is, is that every school is at a certain point. And I think that we just have to meet them where they're at, um, and show growth year after year. And I think that this accountability structure has given us a conversation piece and a way for us to chart a path. And that's really a lot of the work that Kara and I have been doing, um, over the last couple of months, is talking a lot about what that path could look like, and how we can help support our schools in providing the absolute best education for our kids.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's really where kind of our heart is, and that's where our driving force is.
And I think it's really good that you're actually going to the schools and sitting in on those meetings, listening to the teachers, because they're really the ones who kind of know, you know, what might be working, what isn't, some changes that may, they may have. And I just feel like if the, um, central office is aware of that, then that's everyone working together to make sure that children make progress.
And I should also note that the teachers have been extremely welcoming, uh, to us. Um, they have, you know, kind of welcomed us in, uh, and it's been lovely, um, as new people, uh, to kind of get into these schools and, and, and meet new people and, and see the people that are actually kind of entrenched in this work on a daily basis. So, that's been fabulous for us because we weren't necessarily part of the process, um, in these numbers coming to fruition, but we're definitely, um, involved now. And we're ready to take the, the next steps that we need to take.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Tom.
Great, yeah.
Adding, uh, my thanks for the, the clarity and the brevity of the presentation. It really, um, delivered a lot of information to us, um, you know, in a, in a very clear way. Um, so I was just picking up on, um, yeah, I always approach these conversations with, uh, ambivalence, you know, thinking, I think we all believe that standardized testing has, um, such a limited, um, uh, value in an overall look at our, our students. At, at the same time though, it is a snapshot, and it is data, and so we have to pay attention to it and, and, um, take it seriously. And picking, picking up on some of Amy's, um, questions, you know, one of the criticisms of standardized testing and this kind of standardized testing is that it has limited value for individual teachers, right? Because it's, it's taking a snapshot of, of students that most of, that most of the teachers don't have anymore, right? Um, because they've moved on. Um, and that's what, that's, uh, I think one, one of the important roles that you play and the administration play is, is trying to, um, take the data and help the teachers, um, connect with each other, right? Because the fifth grade teacher whose student, um, took the MCAS exam is now in sixth grade and is talking to that teacher. Could you talk a little bit about how you facilitate those conversations and how you can make the data more meaningful for the individual teacher?
Sure. Okay. Um, so, one of the conversations that I was part of with a principal is actually looking at math, um, data in grade three, math data in grade four, and looking for trends across. So, one of the things we talked about was, we were noticing that students were, um, struggling compared to the state in regards to fractions. So, in looking at that information, um, where are fractions falling in the curriculum map, right? Where is that teaching happening? Um, is it happening really late, um, in the year, and we're not really spending enough time on it? Is it happening at the beginning of the year and we're not revisiting it? Um, so I think that those conversations are, um, very fruitful, even though, um, I agree with your point that student by student, they have moved on, and it's now kind of a, a new group of, of students. Um, the information that I, um, shared up there with you about the Dolbear School, for example, um, and showing sort of in third grade where we were relative to, um, the state, I think is an important snapshot just because if you look, um, at that information, I think you all have a copy of this presentation, you'll actually notice that question eight across the board, conventions, ideas, um, we fell short, but question sixteen, um, we actually were ahead of the state. Both are, um, writing-based questions. Um, but how is it that students are able to formulate, you know, ideas well? You know, for question eight, but, or for question sixteen, but not question eight? Um, what does that question look like? Are we asking that type of question to prepare our students, um, on a regular basis? Um, those, I think that those conversations are important, and those are the types of conversations. For me, I'm someone who believes that you need to get into the item-by-item stuff, you need to look strand by strand, and, or standard by standard, and, uh, make sure that, uh, you know, you are closing those gaps. And I think that a lot of teachers would agree that, you know, there are certain things that, you know, that are covered really well, there are certain things that sometimes, um, are, are a little more rushed than they would like. Um, and then looking at that information year by year and, and, and making changes to the game plan, right? It's no different than a sport, right? You look at, um, the information that's provided and you, uh, you change it up, you know? And in this case, the, the target is, you know, MCAS, and that's the conversation we're having right now.
Right, right, thank you. And then, um, I think you had mentioned this, Matt, um, you know, the, the value, and I think this is the first time that MCAS is looking specifically at growth as well as achievement. Um, and I, I think for all of us, that's really important as well because in some cases, growth is really the more important measure, right?
Right.
Um, and, um, and, and related to that, I was wondering, um, you might know that, um, we've established a new, uh, Student Services Subcommittee.
Yes.
Um, and, um, I think the committee members and then the school committee as a whole is really going to be looking, um, for good, um, relevant data, uh, especially on those, uh, students, um, who, who require additional, uh, support. And so, I was wondering if, if, um, any of the new, um, MCAS data, either the new, uh, the new MCAS or the legacy MCAS is telling us anything about our, our students with disabilities, um, and how they're performing in these standardized tests? And whether more are taking the test or more, um, going into, there's an al- alternative test for students with, with the, the more severe disabilities. But could you talk a little bit about that, that group of students?
I mean, I would say most, most of our students with disabilities are participating in the standard MCAS with accommodations that are ident- identified at the team level. Um, so, you know, what that means is accommodations that they're receiving within, uh, their daily practice in school, they're entitled to on that standard MCAS.
So, it could be more time, for example, to take the exam?
More time, for example, they may have directions read aloud, they may have a scribe, um, you know, so it, it's all very student-specific. Um, so I, I would say that most are participating. There is a small number participating in, in the alternative, and those are for students who, I would say primarily are, are not accessing any of the general education curriculum. They're in a substantially separate program, um, that's really tailored to their individual needs. Um, so, you know, I think the students with disabilities, where they fall in terms of their achievement levels, that may vary. Um, oftentimes, there is a gap with, in terms of where they are in relation to what grade level standards are. And a lot of the specialized instruction is helping to close that gap. Um, so that's where we, where we may see students, um, have, have a harder time to, to reach that meeting expectations range. But I think the, the breakdown, student by student, in terms of where those, uh, students might be struggling or falling short, uh, in finding out where are the skills that they need to develop further, those might be good targets for goal areas for that specialized instruction moving forward.
Mm-hmm. So, is this a conversation then that you, both of you would have with Lynn O'Neill and her staff?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, using that data, yeah, okay.
I think, I think we've been talking about it just as an administrative team. And it's really, it's the larger conversation of administrators.
Yeah.
And then it has to be delegated out at the building level.
Right.
And I think a lot of the principals have taken the lead in terms of working with their teachers and, and breaking things down. As we mentioned, there's a, a huge focus on, on the lowest twenty-five percent population. Um, I know principals have already started that work, um, looking at, at what they're doing to meet those needs.
Thank you.
And if you're looking for your, for data around your Subcommittee, you can actually go school by school using the DESI website, and you can actually break it out by, um, subgroup. So, you can see how our students, um, with disabilities scored, um, at each school.
Right, both achievement and growth, again, yeah, yeah.
Achievement and growth, so you can actually pull that information.
Yeah.
It's publicly accessible, um, and, uh, I'd be happy to help in any way.
All right, thank you.
I, I think I would add that the, um, the trend, unfortunately, in regard to equity and achievement continues, right? And so, um...
The gap.
The gap, right? And so, the subgroups that were, that have been in a gap, um, racial subgroups, students with disability subgroups, um, English language learners, socioeconomic, you know, the, the kind of the disadvantaged groups, and so, or socioeconomic, but, you know, and so, those gaps continue to exist. And I, and I think, which is one of the reasons why they've, they've changed the accountability system to look at growth and achievement, but also, um, attendance, um, as well as just a cohort of the, the bottom quartile, right? To say, you know, like, so if we don't just look at subgroups or break out subgroups, but just look at who are your students in this bottom quartile? So, the department has actually produced lists of students to say, th- these are the students that we're going to look at, that we're going to use for your accountability piece. And, and we need to pay attention to those students, um, which is actually, I think, a brilliant move because now no one's left off the list, and no one's in one category but not in another. They're just saying, in regard to the assessment data this year, this is a cohort that you need to pay attention to. And you're going to be held to account on it, because we're going to use how these students test as your accountability rating for your school and for your district. So, um, but, but I think the, the, I guess I, any distress, but it's, and it's not about, you know, everyone gets one score, it's the equity piece around, you know, we meet kids where they're at, and what does growth look like for those cohorts? And so, I, I think I'm excited about the conversation, and I'm particularly excited about kind of the level of work that we're doing with data with Kara and Matt this early in the school year. Um, you know, there, we're having conversations around data, um, this year differently than we have had in the past. So, um, and I think that there's more, um, it's more cohesive, it's more aligned, um, and, and it's more consistent. And I, and I'm, I'm really pleased with where we're starting, so.
Just have one more question. Um, in terms of like the high achievers, you know, is, is there any way to analyze the data to make sure that they're actually being challenged enough?
That's a, that's a great question. That's a, that's a great question. Um, I can just speak to, you know, when we talked about um internal data in, in analyzing that information. I think one of the, the big pieces of information that came from those conversations is, is looking at how are we assessing and progress monitoring all students? Because it's easy to get hung up on, on our struggling learners, our students who are performing at the lowest levels. But it's so important that we're tracking and monitoring all of our students, um, no matter where they're, they're falling in terms of achievement levels. And so that, that has been part of the conversation too, which I've been excited about. Um, because I think, you know, as we're talking about those students, those students that are exceeding grade level expectations, well, how are we, how are we challenging them? And how are we going to see growth demonstrated for them moving forward? Um, so again, that's just, that's a huge piece of it. I don't know if you want to add to that.
Growth is, you know, the, it's available for all students. So we look at it, right? So even if we see a student is meeting expectations, um, if their growth percentile is below forty, that's, that's a conversation starter, right? Like that means that they're tech- technically not achieving a year's worth of growth, so um, what's going on there? Um, and, and a lot of places would look at that, say, well, hey, they're still meeting, let's move on. Um, but that's still a conversation that we need to have, right? Like making sure that they're, they're achieving and keeping up with that, with that cohort year after year.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. One of the uh, one of the questions that I'm, I'm pleased that you popped in. Uh, I was gonna have a question similar to Greg's with regard to the difference between uh, uh, the new MCAS and the legacy MCAS and the, the usefulness of the, of the analysis, not just the, the changes within the test itself. So um, I think that's a, a piece that we were all sort of um, you know, uh maybe struggling with or concerned about when the, when the, when the changes came about that how, how will this impact our capacity to uh, to be able to make some, some decisions around, around data? We've been, we've been using, you know, MCAS data for a generation now perhaps. Um, and with this change in mind and then the, the DESI telling us, but don't compare it to anything. It's like, well, that's not gonna not happen. Um, so anyways, I'm glad to, to hear that, uh, you know, the, 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 there is some usefulness coming out of, of that piece. And so thank you for that. Let me just add uh my, my thoughts with the rest of the committees in appreciating your level of preparedness and the depth that, that you, that you get into this. Um, it was uh, it, it certainly, uh certainly remains to be um, you know, work to do. Um, work for, for the, for the district, work for each of us. Um, and uh, but that's certainly, I think, um, one of the, one of the most interesting things to me, uh perhaps in the team with all, of, obviously all three of you, um, is that your fresh look at this, especially Kara and Matt. Your fresh look at this having not really been part of, of the last number of years and, and building the work that has gone into uh leading up to these tests taken last spring, um, is, is really, i- is really enlightening. And I think it's really, really a, a, um, a striking compliment to the work of, 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 of our teachers across the district. Who have really put lots of time, energy and, and life's passion into uh, into bringing the success that we've seen. That, that we have been on a path of improving over the years. And if we were to do the comparison that we're not supposed to do, we would certainly see a, a positive growth. Maybe a stumble here or there, but we'd certainly be on an upward swing across the board. Um, and I think that is a hallmark frankly of the additional resources that, that the school committee in this, in the, the, the town has been able to put in, into uh the school department and frankly, the quality, the quality teaching practice. Um, that we have a team of extraordinary educators who are taking this uh matter, not only this piece of it very, very uh, uh seriously. Um, uh, but certainly, certainly it goes, it goes a long, long way uh to making the type of improvement that uh, that, that the district expects, that the, that, that the families expect. So that's, that's really enlightening and I think your, your analysis will only help us uh to, to get more of that. We've been talking about the data and, and being able to uh not put it on one person. Uh, you know, Doug is assistant superintendent and Kim before him as assistant superintendent would. It is, you know, everything else that we needed to do, plop, get, get added to that, get added to that job. Capacity now that we have some, some data coming out of both of your offices. Um, it's really just gonna help us make that next leap and that next jump. And being able to, I think, uh anyways, being able to make, make so, some more differences. Being able to see uh the, you know, the, the highlights, school by school, having, uh each school having uh some uh positive story to tell. Is um, is, 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 is enlightening. It's, it's, it's warm. And um, I think uh the teachers and the curri- the curriculum leaders and the building leaders have a lot to be proud of. So thank you for representing their work. Thank you for, for, for highlighting their work. Um, and we certainly look forward to uh, to many more conversations around what those needs, what those needs look like moving forward and, and uh what, what, what can we do to uh, to, to, to help continue to move that along? Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
Thanks so much.
Okay, uh moving along, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities, Mr. Leakos.
Yes, thank you. So we uh had our first uh reconstituted meeting last week um with uh Ann and RJ and myself uh and Doug and Mike Pfefferling, um, and Judy. Um, and um, so uh we, we started by just revisiting the um, kind of the mission, the purpose of the, of the subcommittee, um, how we wanna structure um the conversations, um, um, uh, how we want to balance uh kind of analyses of both um the budget process and the um state of our facilities and facilities planning. Um, and um, uh talked specifically about, um, especially for Ann's uh benefit, thinking about how um, uh Doug and his team uh developed the schedule uh for uh the, uh budget planning leading up to the, you know, the various conversations with uh the staff, um, public presentations, the state of the schools, public hearings, school committee votes, all of that, going through some of that schedule. Um, talking about the importance of our ongoing conversations with the uh finance committee um and how we're gon- we wanna structure those. And um, and then um, uh Doug gave us uh an update on, on the facilities, uh the, the visit to the, so Wakefield Memorial High School, um, and uh the process that we heard about tonight. Um, so that's, that's where we landed. Um, and then we're meeting again um, uh on the fifth of November, uh prior to Tom meeting.
Very good, thank you. The labor relations committee has not met since our last meeting, so moving on, policy communications.
Yeah, nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Uh, student services, I know uh Ann is not here tonight, but anyone else wanna? I don't know if they've met.
We have not met again.
No.
Okay, very good. Item number ten, uh future agenda items uh and discussions. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November thirteen. Um, any particular items that the committee wanted to uh, 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 ask beyond that agenda? If, if not now, then certainly don't hesitate to email Doug or myself. Um, yes, Craig?
Um, so I, I just realized that we didn't um have a chance, or maybe we didn't intend to, to talk about the Waltons um special designation um in, uh as a school of distinction where we, cause we were looking at so much data, we didn't even have a chance. Um, one idea might be to have uh some of the staff from the Walton and to talk about that and about how things are going there.
Sure.
With, with the new, the new building.
Do you wanna talk about the, yeah?
See the people hiding in the back there? We can do that.
All right.
That'd be great.
Did we finalize a date for the uh Boston?
Oh, right.
And also for us committee in our retreat, did we have those two days finalized?
We do. So Boston is the following, the following, um, the second November meeting.
So the twenty-seventh?
Which is the twenty-seventh, thank you. I didn't have it off the top of my head. I was gonna do thirteen plus fourteen in my head, so that was coming to twenty-seventh eventually. And the uh, the retreat is uh Saturday, December fifteen.
Ten.
Oh, December ten?
No, there is no.
No, there's no December ten.
Oh, they're in, but it's, it's not as at November ten?
You moved it again?
Well, they were.
RJ had, I thought RJ's schedule was clear.
No, yeah, good to go.
You wanted to.
Which date?
Okay, well, I, I've been planning on the fifteenth, December fifteenth, which was the second date that everyone had.
Oh, okay, I just saw RJ's response.
Grab you one.
December fifteenth.
Free on the fifteenth, I hope?
Yeah, for, yeah, fifteen should be fine.
So the, the more, I was, that seemed to land, so I, if that's not a good date any longer, that seemed to be where everyone landed.
Meeting, because you weren't here maybe, we, we all agreed on the tenth, but then we were waiting for RJ to get back. We kinda decided on the.
We preferred that, we preferred the tenth.
The tenth of November.
Only because it was sooner and we all, well, yeah, we thought it would be good to do sooner.
Okay.
But we were waiting on RJ.
Once RJ said he was clear, I thought that the date was going with.
That's fine.
It, it's, it's still okay with you though?
Yeah.
Tenth, okay, all right, okay.
That's the uh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's no problem with me. No, it was never a problem with me.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Do we need to, do we need to contact MASC?
We do, yeah, we'll have to, yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'm gonna actually go see him tomorrow.
Conference, right, that?
Well, that's the, that's the end of the conference, so
Yeah.
You know, a conflict will be that our speakers from MASC won't be able to join us.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's a conflict with the tenth wasn't great for our, our facilitators.
Oh.
Cause they're all gonna still be at the conference.
Well, we would prefer to have them there, right?
Well, yes, the goal was to have a facilitator.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we had invited MASC, whoever happened to be the, um, um, so that was the, that wound up being a problem with, 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 with them.
So the whole MASC team is there through Saturday?
Well, that, yeah, the conference is still goes through Saturday at three o'clock or so. We, we don't, you know, usually stay that long, but um.
Right.
So we won't have our, any of the facilitators that we um had hoped for.
So back to the fifteenth.
So we're really, we're really back to the fifteenth.
Yeah, 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 I.
I think Ann said that was okay with her too, cause that was the second date, I think.
The, the second, the fifteenth, my memory of the email, I think, was that, that the fifteenth was good for everyone.
Yep.
Uh, and the tenth, we were waiting to hear from RJ, so then, so I sort of just landed on the fifteenth, maybe just in my own head, so I, I'm glad that.
Cause you remembered about the MASC, none of us did. Yeah, I think, I think it's important cause the one, the last one we did when we had Dorothy Presser, she really played a um constructive role in the conversation, so, yeah.
So, okay.
Excellent.
All right. One of the things that we'll be putting out, um, putting out some, some information about, uh, just so we, but we can all just do it, mark your calendar. Um, and, and Greg, you, you uh, it made me think of it a few moments ago when you mentioned Walton. That um, the Walton uh community and um Doug and I have been discussing the, uh, the, the, the prospect of having a sort of a, a community open house. Uh, and the date that we're looking at is uh Tuesday, December four. Uh, more information will be, will be out uh about that very soon. Um, uh, we were uh possibly thinking of, of having a um, a uh, you know, in, uh, having a joint meeting um with the town council. Town council obviously has vested interest in seeing the facility, being part of that. Um, so we were thinking of having a, a joint meeting around that, around the Walton project and around the opening. Um, and then have uh some community tours and, and um, you know, having a real, a real less, a celebration of, 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 of the new school, or the, the majority new school. So more information will be coming out about that, but you, you, you struck a chord when you mentioned Walton, so everyone just uh, so that's a regular uh school committee night, Tuesday, um, uh, December?
No, it's not.
No, it's not, it's, it's not a regular Tuesday night, right? It's an off week for us, so it wouldn't be a, a conflict for our meeting anyways. Uh, but more to follow. Okay. Um, very good, we have, we have those, uh, those, those things lined up. So uh, school committee, uh, school committee comments, uh going around the table, um, RJ?
Stop for tonight, thank you.
Okay. Colleen?
Uh, I just wanted to um thank Matt and Kara again. I, I forgot to say thank you before I jumped right into. So, thank you so much. And I, it's, while you were speaking about, you know, sort of keeping in mind, and, and Greg commented on this too, about um just overall education, um, I'm like staring at our instructional strategy and, you know, I think it's always important to remember the well-rounded education and student that we're all striving for. And, you know, when I'm, I have the opportunity sometimes to go into all of the schools and, and see the students um through my other job there. But um, you really can see that happening. And you talked about student discourse Kara, and they're engaged and they're, they're happy to be learning and, and that just speaks so much alongside of the, the data that we just went over. So, thank you, everyone.
Amy?
I'm good, thank you.
Great, Chris?
I just wanna congratulate the uh, the marching band on uh two successful shows since uh we last met. They uh came in, uh, Nesba has a numerical score and uh they came in first place in the show uh with Nesba. And uh with last Saturday's show with MICA, they got all uh five stars on all categories. Uh, they're doing very, very well. Uh, MICA finals are this Sunday and then uh, so Nesba finals are the following Sunday, so.
Very good. Okay, um, I just cer- certainly echo uh what everyone, uh what everyone said uh this evening. Uh, and uh certainly um wanted to also add, um, one of the things that is happening, I think as our meeting is commencing, is going on right now, is a very dangerous fire occurring in town at the First Baptist Church. We certainly wish our fellow townspeople of s- safety and strength and in rebuilding whatever, whatever damage there may be. And, and thanks to the first responders for their, their work and dedication and courage. Um, but also wanna be thinking our, uh, thinking about our friends at that First Baptist Church for what is going to be a difficult uh time for them ahead. So, uh, with that uh in mind, we have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, move that we adjourn the Tuesday, this uh, October twenty-third, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Second.
Uh, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you all and good night.